Good evening, welcome to the school reunions Monday, June 27th, 2022, six o'clock. According to citizens' tally lives they board over the eighteen eight seven building. Call the meeting to order.
Mrs. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Gayheart?
Here.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Here.
Mr. Martel?
Here.
Adam?
Here.
Mrs. Ray?
Here.
Here. Now, we do have a quorum, and we will continue. We'll note that tonight's meeting has been noticed for state statutes. Do we have any community participation?
I did not receive any community participation by letter or email.
All right, here you go. We'll discuss and read in that. Do your approval of our minutes. Regular session from June thirteenth attached. Questions? Comments? Concerns? Hearing them, looking for motion.
I will approve the minutes of the June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two regular session school board meeting.
Present it. Is there a second?
Second.
So we move into second to approve the minutes of the June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two regular session school board meeting. Present it.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carrying, general other fund bills, Mr. Truman.
The general other fund bills this evening covers checks number one, four, six, five, four, seven through one, four, six, six, five, four, wire transfer sixteen fifty-seven through sixteen sixty, and ACH check number six, five, seven through six, eight, seven, in a combined amount of two hundred twenty-six thousand, four hundred eighty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents. And I sent out a memo with some information on several of the bills in the board.
I just had a question. Oh, okay. A lot of times you've got the renovations and all that stuff separated out, but there's a feel towards the end. It must have been a credit on Kehoe Henry Associates, options renovation architects. So usually like those are bunched together. How come that one's not with each other?
Because we're at a point now where the referendum muddies have been exhausted.
Oh, okay.
So it's the balance of the project that's coming out will be budgeted within the general fund. So that's why it's not in that stuff.
Oh, okay. Well, that's as far as we're concerned.
Yeah, that was a good question.
The large format printer at the high school. So it says it's for the high school library.
Library or the makerspace area?
Okay.
It's kind of the giant use.
Is that something that's unique just to that area? Or is that same printer available elsewhere? Or is this?
I think it would be available for the whole high school.
Okay, so other areas are able to use it as well?
Correct.
We also have one middle school. We do have one here district office as well.
Sure. Okay, so that would be the one that's in for that building?
Correct.
Okay.
And see here, we had health card caps for exchange students. So I'm assuming that means graduation caps?
Correct.
So we don't give them what they we have extra gowns or something, but caps we do separately?
Right, so they keep them.
Yeah. But my kids bought their gowns. Do they rent them though?
No, they buy their gowns as well. We have extra.
Gowns, okay. So I have some if anybody wants them.
The purple's the same as the one at the high school.
Okay. Yeah, if my kids have something and want the gowns.
If you ever have another six, eight kid or, you know, let me know, I have a gown for them.
What's other questions?
Other questions?
I move to approve the general and other fund bills of June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. Check numbers one, four, six, five, four, seven to one, four, six, six, five, four. Wire numbers one, six, five, seven to one, six, six, zero, and ACH numbers six, five, seven to six, eight, seven, in a combined amount of two hundred twenty-six thousand, four hundred eighty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
So we move to second to approve the general other fund bills of June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. Checks number one, four, six, five, four, seven to one, four, six, six, five, four. Wire numbers one, six, five, seven to one, six, six, zero, and ACH check numbers six, five, seven to six, eight, seven, in a combined amount of two hundred twenty-six thousand, four hundred eighty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents as presented.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Oh, Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Motion carrying. OPEC transfer proposal, Mr. Truman.
Yeah, this evening the school board is being asked to consider approving the use of some of the OPEC funds, which were set aside starting in two thousand and six to pay retirement benefits for those employees that are eligible for that. And the school board established that at that time. You may recall that in some of our budget cycles, we identified the possible use of that for balancing the budget. We haven't had to use that for that purpose. So those funds have been accumulating. As we look at the potential kind of fiscal clip coming up in a few years, the timing based on that timeframe, and then also as those benefit liabilities beginning to decrease, it really started to look at using those funds. So with the proposal, basically what would happen is we would move those funds to the general fund and then pay this year's pay-as-you-go retirement benefits from those funds. That would free up in the general funds that were set aside, and that will be set aside within our fund balance, like more. And then if approved, then we would do the same action again next year as well.
Are we 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 were putting like ten thousand dollars every?
Absolutely, yes.
We're still doing that?
No, we haven't done that now.
I didn't think so, but.
I have to go back, maybe for the last ten plus years, but originally.
Yeah, originally, that's where all this link came.
Correct.
Okay.
And then I think in some years, we had some balance, in fund balance, and the board would transfer those. But that was all before we changed that whole liability. And at that time, the liability was just increasing.
But so that if we took this out some out, we'd still have a way to cover our estimated.
Correct.
Okay, so the amount we'd be taking out this year would cover this year's obligation for those retirees and then?
Then next year, or the next year's. You know, next year's is a projection because you don't know what new retirees you might have next year.
Right.
So, yeah.
Other questions?
So as I understand it, the the amount we're going to transfer out is the three hundred forty-three we play to?
Correct. That includes what's what's considered the pays you go gross amount. And then what's called the implicit rate subsidy. And you may ask, what does that mean? And the implicit rate subsidy is an actuary estimate of what the true cost of that liability would be if those retirees had to go out and seek insurance outside of our group.
Oh.
And it's a calculation that the actuary does.
No, my question for you is, this is our own OPEC, but basically is it WRS? If WRS would hold, would we be liable for all those payments theoretically?
That's a great question because the government accounting standards board changed a few rules a couple of years ago that now requires us to report the WRS liability.
Right, right.
And what I understand is WRS is making some adjustments with their balances in the future so that a liability for the participants will eventually get to zero. But it's not there yet. So technically, there would be some liability, and that's why it has to be recorded on our books.
Okay.
But if you look at that section on our financial statements, my guess is most people don't have an understanding of what those numbers mean.
No, they don't. And it fluctuates from year to year and it's just.
And I. The auditors always have to wait for certain reports from WRS and then include that section, which you probably see in the township as well. Yeah.
Mm-hmm. And and our auditor that we had one time tried to explain to the board.
It's very.
Their eyes glazed over at some point.
Most people wouldn't, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have a concern that WRS?
No, it's actually one of the best ones in the state for for that. It was theoretical.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why it's theoretical.
I think it's rated one of the best ones in the world.
Okay, great. Awesome.
Yeah, it's definitely they know what we're doing.
If WRS holds, we have a lot of issues.
I know, but theoretically.
Okay, just wanted to check.
Yeah.
That's a good question.
This is clear, that has nothing to do with this proposal.
Right, no, I I understand that. Sorry.
Other questions?
My question, going to your graph that you have there, insurance liabilities in future years.
Mm-hmm.
Can you explain to me how those are paid for if we are taking monies out of?
We currently are budgeting for this liability within our budget. So it really, as you look forward, it's not increasing. In fact, they go down each year and year. And these projections assume the retirees are eligible, I think, work for the age of sixty-two. In the gasway, that's not what we're seeing now, even if you remember earlier.
Yeah, we're actually seeing them weave in, yeah. Saying well, it's not worth for me to, like, a couple more years, I hit that.
And does that answer your question?
Yeah, so liability, the two seventy-two, that match is up to what? It's written on your memo.
Correct, for this year.
For this year.
And then the futures is, but we're already budgeting about two hundred seventy-two thousand. So as you look at those years.
So that's why it frees up those dollars.
Exactly, yeah. If we weren't budgeting, then that would be a different concern.
Right.
Because once that's, once we use those monies, there's no fund. There's this budget in it.
Correct. And eventually, that liability will cease to be.
Well, yeah, and as the liability ceases, then we don't have a budget for it.
I think that's how we switch, you know, contracts.
And and if there were funds left in the OPEC trust and there was no liability, then that would be considered surplus, and then that would just go to the general fund.
Right.
But we would have to demonstrate that we have no liability before we could do that.
Other questions? Hearing the motion.
I move to approve the use of fund seventy-three OPEC funds to pay for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two pay-as-you-go retiring health insurance obligations as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So we move to the second to approve the use of fund seventy-three OPEC funds to pay for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two pay-as-you-go retiring health insurance obligations as presented. Go call them.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Motion carrying. Your governmental agreement, city?
I noticed Mr. Anzalone was on there as well, but Mr. Anzalone and I had an opportunity to meet with the city council and share with them the proposal to add the grant writer position to be shared with the chamber, the city. The library is part of the city, the library and ourselves, and they were very excited about that and supported the establishment that was intergovernmental agreement with the city of health.
So Jason, I have a question. This establishes the agreement, but then there will also be a job description that will be written as well?
We have the job description. It's also just shared at the prior board meeting.
Okay. So then I have a few questions regarding this. Just gonna find my. So whereas the district, city, and chamber agree to share responsibilities regarding the oversight, direction, and evaluation, and then I believe somewhere else it says that there will be one person from each organization that will be overseeing, will be overseeing that position. Is that correct?
Number four.
Evaluating for the.
Yeah, the oversight committee.
They provide, so, but it's our our employee.
Yeah.
Right, but I understand that. But do we know who the each of those representatives will be?
I do not know from the city. I would have John Anzalone as our community engagement coordinator. We'd have him as our district representative and the one who would deliver the evaluation.
Okay.
So like for our SRO officer, the middle school principal, the high school principal, they'll get together and they'll let Chief Christensen know. Actually, it's not Chief, it's the captain who does that evaluation. But they get together, they share the info with them, and then they use the police department evaluation for that. But I don't know who the city would choose to appoint there.
Sure.
Chris Clapper from the chamber and Chad Robinson from the library would be unactivated volunteer.
Okay. So this isn't naming a position of who, like, say, John leaves someday and somebody else is in that position? It's not naming that that position would be part of the oversight committee? It's just it's whoever?
This is currently written, does not, but if we wanted to, we could put specific language in there.
No, I don't necessarily want it to say a specific position, but that would be at your discretion, who would represent the school current? Okay. Or whoever is in your position. Okay. And then how is that committee going to be the one who kind of directs what the grant writer will be writing grants for?
They would be the the point persons and communicating. So for example, the school district, John's a part of our director meeting. We meet weekly with the director. So we have representation from the elementary, from the K five and the high school level as well. So John would be the for the school district, that focus point or that gathering of information. So if a principal or a librarian, hey, here's this grant that we'd like support, maybe direct them to John, the community district coordinator, to coordinate with the grant writer on that. Because we still have to have that, what I don't want are really newly grants out there that may require matching funds. Those are things that we have to take into consideration, whether it's essential or not, post-corvation. And we can put that, we put that on as part of our agendas in that director meeting recording from that school piece.
Okay.
The other organizations are, to be frank, a little simpler. The chamber, library, and city are small positions.
Okay.
And obviously, from the city standpoint, they would feel the same way. They can't have the grant writer write a two million dollar grant, which requires two million dollars in matching funds without from the city council. So this position that, yeah, they're going to have, and this is what the SRO officers have said as well. We have a few unique positions. The social worker over at CCA. But I remember Joe would tell me all the time, I have so many bosses, I have too many bosses. You do have a lot of bosses and different people in that that aspect. But the the organization, the foundation there.
Yeah. Is, I'm wondering on the, when you have, when you have three different organizations and because this is a community funded position through the school district, will the focus of the grants being sought after be community in nature in that they would benefit the community as a whole? Or I I'm only asked because, say, you know, the city ends up having a bunch of grants that they want written, but, yeah, we have some grants that we want written too. Like, how does the, how does this person, like, divide their time in an equal way? I guess is the question.
Yeah, and and I don't know if it would be completely equal in like a third, a third, or a third.
No, no.
I think that's something that'll be more nuanced and we'll have to see what grants are there, which may be available. We noticed from the, what was the name of the the other model that we looked at? That the city dollar amount was higher than the district dollar amount. And in part, it could just be the grants.
There's more available grades.
Along the sides of them. And but we also have a lot of people internally who also do specific grant writing just for the
Sure.
for that experience and background in that. I think, like, if I look at, you know, Kelly Demarash, she's probably written close to two million dollars in grants in the past three years.
Yep.
So we we wouldn't lose that component. I wouldn't say, I guess I view any grant that's received by the school, while it may not necessarily be community directed or completely focused there, I think it benefits the community by the additional programming or offsetting cost of parents.
Sure.
A lot of those.
Yeah.
But I I think that's something we'll have to work on and figure out, and how do we balance that?
Yeah.
Make sure that they're not overwhelmed in it. I also view, I think there's a potential that as we get into those grants and the writing, and many of them have up to ten percent cover administrative costs.
Yep.
If that person's getting, hey, I don't have time, but because they're writing eight million dollars for the grants a year, but we're having up to eight hundred thousand in administrative costs, then there could be the potential to add staff within that department if they're self-sustaining.
Yeah.
And increase that bandwidth.
So do we know what, do we do we have, I would see a big in here about what our administrative costs would be? Or is that usually typically set by each grant?
It's that's set by each grant.
Okay, because I know I've had some that allow it, but I'm not sure all of them.
Not necessarily. Bill, what would you say? You see a lot of the grants.
Usually it's up to like ten percent, certainly not exceeding that.
I've never seen up to, with the ones that you've had that much, but they're more like in the four to half to five range.
Yeah, the ones we see in the school, about the ten percent.
Oh, that's all right.
But it depends on the size of the grant.
Right, right.
If it's a larger one, then I have a lower percentage.
That's true, that's true.
But but they, you're right, they vary by grant.
Okay, so so that's why that's not specifically mentioned in here because it's.
Well, and we, as the fiscal agent, to be frank, I I don't necessarily fill any book with financial pieces or for recouping admin costs offsetting. It's not like the city, the city's not putting any dollars in, the library's not putting dollars in, the chamber's not putting dollars in. So any recouping of admin costs that we get should stay with the district.
Do we, I I guess, do we know that we are fiscal agent?
It's running this, the grant writers.
Oh, they're.
Writing it on behalf of the city, so.
Is this our document or did the city write it up with someone?
No, we did.
They gotta fix the spacing a little bit.
Well, it's it's because it's justified on the size.
No, but no, there's a space, like, between three and four, there's no space, there's, there's no the other.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yes.
I'm not talking about the justification.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I like justification as well.
There, I'll fix it.
There you go.
I did have one kind of technical thing in there that I wanted to just bring up, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm being too petty, but in number five, in the event of a breach of the terms and conditions of this agreement by either party.
Any party.
It should be any party because there are three parties. Either indicates two.
I think that you're right.
Yeah, I want to see where it is.
Second, it was.
Number five remedies upon default.
Right where your cursor is, just follow it.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, right there.
It was probably because we took, yeah, we took it from the SRO.
Right. And if you look at number one through four as bold as.
Yeah, I was just gonna say the same thing.
Five and below is not bold.
Just the numbers.
Yeah, just the numbers.
Should we be able to sleep tonight?
I'll let Jody.
That's what I do, that's what I do. I will go back and redo a document when I.
Jody, if you could bold the bold numbers.
Yeah, we're on the same page.
Yeah, I'm just.
Any other?
Expenses beyond wages and benefits will be agreed upon by the parties listed in this agreement. What kind of expenses and beyond wages and benefits are possible? That's the last line of number two. And then number three is this agreement is contingent upon parties agreeing to share additional expenses or ancillary costs. That just strikes me as fairly vague.
Are you referring to expenses that would be above and beyond the designated salary and that?
So I, I think this would be if there were like special trainings or conferences or things along those lines. I know Joe, we've discussed from time to time, like, going to a school safety conference or a training. Yeah, but typically, we would cover that if he was doing that from the school.
If there was something that specifically, let's say the chamber thing, chamber would, we might not pay for that, where chamber may put some money into it, if it was a chamber. Like, training conference.
Yeah, I think we have to specify on that too, is as you're looking at the grant, if there's training, seminars, conferences and things like that, I think they should be connected to what the grant being pursued is as well. So if the chamber is going to benefit, if we receive the grant, I think those costs incurred should be passed on to that entity because it's nice to have three people or three parties involved, but it really is return on investment. If the if the funds generated go towards one of the three parties, any of those other contingent fees should be absorbed by the ones that are going to benefit from the achievement of that that grant. Otherwise, a blanket statement in general, I I think is a little dangerous, a slippery slope.
This statement is protecting us because if the chamber says, we would like to send this person up to Green Bay for a two-day training that has information about this grant, this would allow us to say, well, that's fine, but you need to, as the chamber, cover the cost for the person who went there and participated in that event. Just as I, so that's where, when I don't view the shared as this is an equal shared, it's if there's additional ancillary costs, that we may go to the city and say, that's fine, you want to send this person to DC for this grant informational session, that's fine, but then we need to cover the cost to have them go to that. I wouldn't.
And that's beyond wages and benefits, so that would that would fall under that.
Right, but I don't feel like the language really communicates that.
Right, it's not specific enough, I don't believe.
So how, what would we like to add? If you could share additional Spencer and ancillary costs? Such as, do we want to give some examples?
Focusing on the attainment of that grant should be incurred by the the party that benefits from that.
But, you know, sometimes, some things actually relate to other things. How valuable information I've used from the town and vice versa. So it's not necessarily more globally the information you get.
Yeah, that's that's a point.
Yeah, but I but I think that's where we can have a conversation. If we all see a benefit, we could say, sure, we'll share the cost.
Send the person. Okay, fix. Oh, excuse me.
No, no. Can we go back up to two on the last sentence?
Yes. So it's beyond wages?
No, second last sentence, where it says, chamber or city shall supply an office space for the grant writer position. Why do we have to want to talk about that they will, they shall receive and dispense funds for grants obtained by the grant writer? Or we want to say that, and they almost make it like they're the ones going to be getting just the funding. I don't think that's needed.
We're the fiscal agent.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Yeah, I think you have a point, where it's, we're the fiscal agent, why would we say that they're correct? Well, we have a space here if they need to work in our building, can we have a space that can be, whether you want to?
Yeah, we just don't have a designated office space to.
But if they had to gather information and documents, they could sit here.
We have the rooms upstairs, we can use them here.
Okay, all right, that's, that's.
Do we have a, under the terms, I don't see considered the, the end date to this agreement? I know we have that, I think, blank under, under one.
Yep, under number one.
And I'm wondering, by having maybe an an end date would provide the opportunity for all parties to just evaluate how this is going. Because my guess is that over time, there's going to be some things that come up that we just haven't anticipated yet, right? And then I would provide an opportunity.
You talked about two years, but two years is a year.
Right, it's not, it could be terminated in the first year, right?
That's under number one.
Right.
Sorry, I was gonna, when do we want this to be effective, this?
Well, it depends on.
When the hiring is, it would be depending on when we plan on getting the, the posting out and then the hiring, I think we have to take that in consideration.
We got 2022 in there twice on that one.
Well, you know what, I think it's not effective until the other parties.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, can you put a date on it till they approve it?
Then under number one, effective until we want to say June 30th, 2024?
Yeah, you almost need a specific date.
Yeah.
It's at the end of the school year.
It gives two years, doesn't it, initial? And we have to revisit it. Any other areas?
Jason, could I just make a quick comment?
Yes.
Yeah, just when we were talking about number three and some of those other items, I think it's important to remember that no matter who receives a grant, that the intention of this is that what benefits one will benefit all, that we know that if our city is improved and attractive, that benefits, you know, people wanting to move here and live here and, and go to school there and vice versa. So I think just always keeping in mind that the mission is that no matter who gets the grant, it would benefit all.
I'd like to grant for the roundabout that. All right.
We'll take some of the.
Any other discussion points or?
Have we looked at posting and what availability of grant writers are? What the, the pay scales ranges are? What the prerequisites and directives that they have to have fall in place in southeastern Wisconsin?
Yes, we have, we have now posted it, we wanted to wait until the operational agreement was in place and then go ahead and post. We are looking at, the salary range can be significant depending on the individual and how we structure that and we look at that as being negotiable, but we have that dollar amount, I believe you budgeted $100,000.
$110,000.
$110,000. But we have flexibility in adjusting that up or down based on the candidate pool and who we get prior to finalizing the, the budget and the funding, the community service allocation.
Just trying, I'm struggling with. So we're, we're employing somebody to go out and, and write grant money for things that benefit the community. What? Who defines what is that, what is a benefit? And I guess does the, is the board ever going to have any kind of knowledge of what's being pursued for a grant or?
Or prioritizing on which ones to go after most aggressively? How do we prioritize that?
Who's making the director is working with that person?
I think the district leadership team from the district standpoint in that perspective, I go from the city, the city administrative office, the chamber is small, that would be Chris in that aspect. But they, we would do regular reports on that, like, just like the model that was demonstrated and shared.
Okay.
Grants related to the district would still follow our, you know, the district procedure and stuff. A report to, and that report is made for, you know, all the, all the entities involved. And if that's something of a special interest, the board could always request, they would like to report every month, we'd like a monthly report or that we could put on, part of the agenda or every two or quarterly.
Okay.
And we could just schedule that, put that on as usual agenda.
I don't see enough monthly because it's.
Yeah, monthly is too, that's too much, but.
Yeah, I mean, you're busy trying to get work two or three times a year.
Yeah, but I think that would be good, keep the board apprised. And I think it's an exciting area and it's just investing.
Okay.
We can embed that and we could have it as part of John's directory.
Okay.
Just when he does his reports and his cycle that he includes in various reports.
Okay.
Or we can always ask the grant writer themselves, because then like we've done with Cynthia a couple of times.
Sure.
They're very responsible.
Okay.
Any other thoughts or discussion you part?
Will it be open to departments within the district and leadership in the district and community with, within our city to give suggestions of ones that they found? And prioritize them?
Yeah, I think that's the plan and having that additional support and resource there to have a skilled writer to write those and assist with that or take the lead on.
But I, I think we want to guide whoever that person is rather than having them do all the searching to find them and then immerse themselves into that grant writing. Because grant writing is pretty load-bearing, that's for sure.
Well, a combination, they may have, if they're a good grant writer, they may have sources they know to look for. And then obviously like city probably will have things come across their desk, we may have things come across. They'll be getting it from lots of places. And working with the administrative team, leadership team, helping prioritize them. And some of it prioritizing may be because you got due dates, it may be as simple as that. So you can't have a specific.
Oh, it is, and it's astonishing sometimes how short of a window they.
Right. That's what I'm saying, so sometimes.
At both the federal and the state level, they're like, oh, this grant's open, you've got three weeks.
Right, that's why I said sometimes prioritize it, you can't.
Right, right.
I get, I get emails on a regular basis that, and part of it as well, and Paul, you can understand this, is we can't initiative overload the teachers. And a lot of the grants aren't there to fund projects that you're currently doing. They're there to start new projects. So we have to be very judicious in what we look at as a fit within what we're already doing, the direction we're going. Is there bandwidth, is it something that the teachers or that group is wanting? And so we pass on a lot of potential options just because of not wanting to create that initiative overload and some of those problems. But there's other things like, you know, the Maker Fair and where there are grants that could fit within that or the project leadway grants that we wrote that we remain aware of that fit right into what we're already doing.
Well, the Harbor Freight grant, you wouldn't want to burden a teacher trying to do that, but would it be seen from the district aspect of you know, being high up there to offset our, our operational costs?
Anything else?
I, I mean, I think in general, it looks good on paper, every plan does, but I think there's a lot of technicalities that really have to be investigated as well as we move forward. I mean, it, it obviously can pay for itself and then some, but I think there's a lot of blank pages there that really have to be viewed before we dive into the deep end.
Did you know, when we had John's position, John's position is brand new, we really didn't take another position and say, we're going to do this. And we dove in and it's worked out great. And yes, this one's an intergovernmental agreement. And so there may be some growing pains, but I think we've got good contact people who know how to work with each other and their goal is ultimately for the community.
Great. Anything else? See that motion?
I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the city of Elkhorn as modified.
Also. Move the second into the intergovernmental agreement with the city of Elkhorn as modified.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
No.
Now, Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
No.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes. Recommendations to district administrator personnel.
All right, you've got to copy the personnel sheet. If there's any questions on any of those, I'd be happy to answer that. I want to thank those. Yeah, Fred, I want to thank him for his, he's been here, he started the same year I did. He's going to be going into financial planning.
Yeah.
Yeah, good, great, really happy for him, just sad to lose him. My kids loved him.
Then our high schools, both psychologists, we had hired and then there were some complications that came up with licensing in that area. So he was very gracious and resigned, he'll continue to work on that. And yeah, any other questions on any of those?
Are we having any luck finding replacements or are we just starting to produce these?
No, we, we are, it's a very aggressive market in pursuing the
Yeah.
staff and the replacements. The pool is, it's not what it was here nine years ago. Who would have thought that certain things would discourage people from going into education? But yeah, so the numbers are down, it's a competitive marketplace. We're seeing that, but we are still having very good candidates come through and come in. So I don't know, it's, I hate to use this analogy, but it's, you know, if you and a friend are in the woods and you come across a bear, you don't have to outrun the bear, you just have to outrun your friend.
And I would be.
Able to outrun our friends for now, but I just want the second bear to. You don't know how it's implemented.
Yeah.
I feel bad that way, but that's, that's really what's.
So we'll repost that school psychologist position. But in the meantime, we have to readdress shifting personnel and Mr. Colasmo and all the things that he's been inundated with?
Yeah, we're actually really fortunate because we, when we did the interviews for that, we had two exceptional candidates. And the other candidate who lives in Lake Como, we were able to reach back out to her and she accepted the position.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're solid there, we absolutely did not want to go into the school year down another school.
Right.
She did come and join us from Beloit. So we're very excited about that, yeah.
It's always tough to see that really going.
Questions?
I move to approve the personal recommendation sheet for June 27th, 2022, including new employment, contracts conditioned upon passing background check, and district mandated drug screening as presented.
Is there a second?
It's the second to approve the personal recommendation sheet for June 27th, 2022, including new employment contracts conditioned upon passing the background check and district mandated drug screening as presented.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion care, school gifts.
All right. For school gifts, we have, this is, the Supporting Our School Inc. has donated $1,359 in eighteen cents to help Acor Mini-Cor State Middle School. Elkhorn Express has donated a windscreen for the softball team valued at $1,500. TDS has donated picture backdrop with the Elkhorn logo and TDS logo to use for events valued at $850. And Luna Roofing has donated 24 bundles of shingles valued at $840.
Was that for the project?
That was for the outdoor classroom at the.
Oh, okay, that's what.
Motion to approve the generous gifts.
So.
Second. It's moved the second to approve the generous gifts of Supporting Our Schools Inc., Elkhorn Express, TDS, and Luna Roofing as presented.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray? Mrs. Ray? Let's say excuse, and Mr. Scaram?
Yes.
Motion care. Second reading of the budget.
Yeah, this is the second reading of the 2022-23 district budget. As you know, we require to operate within the. As you know, we required to operate within the perimeter set by the state of Wisconsin, which provided no increase in revenue cap nor for pupil aid this year. Those decisions were made in June of two thousand twenty-one. Probably didn't anticipate hearing pressures that we're all under now. However, the state has said basically, let's use those one-time funding, the ESSR dollars, which we're applying to operate the school district for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. In terms of student enrollment, we're basically assuming status quo, we know we have a large open enrollment classes graduating and probably just to maintain where we're at, might be the real positive piece in terms of overall enrollment. Again, we're utilizing a lot of the ESSR dollars, some of the governor's parish monies to balance the budget. We are also utilizing the transfer service component for a number of our special ed positions and some EL positions that are proposed in the budget. Staffing pieces, we kind of went through at the last meeting. General highlights again represent wage adjustments of about four percent, three percent for transportation, we're assuming health insurance at ten. Overall, when you look at the general under special ed, that's represented by five percent increase in overall spending shares. State equalization aid is a real wild card in terms of estimating this at this point, but we're assuming that's gonna look down primarily because our property values ran out and our student enrollment, resident enrollment went down this year. The combination of those things do result in an increase in the proposed levy of five point nine seven percent. And then we increase point two three, equalized value, twenty-three cents per thousand equalized value. The page that provides, yeah, thank you, Jason, for jumping to that page because probably the only actual figure here that we're certain of is the actual levy increase at this point. What will happen with valuation and how that will affect the overall tax rate, we won't know till October. We won't know our student enrollment until September, we won't know our state aids until October. Okay, three big variables that every year at this time, we don't know. But we make estimates based on the information available. The only other kind of new information, we got some clarification in terms of food service operations. Looks like they're going to increase the reimbursement rates for next year from what they were pre-pandemic. And the free and reduced kind of application process will be back to what it was two years ago as well. So that's probably the new information we have to probably take the last four things in terms of the overall budget.
What would you say, current free and reduced?
In terms of percentage?
Yeah.
Overall, right around thirty percent.
Thirty, okay.
It it does vary by building.
Okay.
But that's probably the overall district.
I did see the legislative, something called that the legislation was proposed to extend the food service.
No, what is, what's the total dollar amount that we get in federal funding for food service?
Our budget's about one point seven million and and over a million of that will be a combination of bed room state reimbursement. So then the balance.
But most of it comes from federal?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Far majority, the state is a very small portion, we get like no reimbursement through the state.
Yeah.
Now, that number is what typically it's been. The last two years has been much higher.
Well, yes.
There's been no.
Right.
No paid lunches, so it's been almost a hundred percent federal reimbursement.
Yeah.
We have heard any, we'll have to approve it to take it to annual meetings, so.
I move to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three district delivery budget as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moved to second to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three district delivery budget as presented.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Second reading of our handbook modifications.
Did not have any questions or suggested changes since our first reading? Are there any parts of that that we'd like to review?
We corrected that.
With the promotion.
I move to approve the revised modifications and additions to the professional and support staff employee handbooks as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second to approve the revised modifications and additions to the professional and support staff employee handbooks as presented.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart? Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
No.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Scaram?
Yes.
Motion carried. Second reading of revised policies.
Likewise, I had no further input regarding the revised policies. Which we need to go.
Other comments? We now look at the motion.
I move to approve the revised policies, code correct their code of conduct, five eleven equal opportunity employment, five eleven rule, employee discrimination complaint procedure, and five eleven and sexual harassment as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So moved to second to approve the revised policies, code correct their conduct, uh, code of conduct, five eleven equal opportunity employment, five eleven rule, employee discrimination complaint procedure, and five eleven title nine sexual harassment as presented.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Um? Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Yes.
Any announcements?
Um, I do have, summer school is underway and seems to be going well. I do have an announcement to make, I just saw it come across Twitter today. But Mr. Dolly, who is one of our computer science teachers in the business department at the high school, he was recognized as the esports coach of the year in the entire country.
Wow.
Yeah.
Wow.
That's pretty impressive, and he also is the president of the esports organization for the state of Wisconsin. So I want to congratulate Mr. Dolly for
Yeah.
his leadership in that and representing them. And we do have a closed session. Could be relatively short.
I just saw UW halls added esports to their to their council and.
They have a.
Yep. And I think it's only one of two UW schools outside of Madison that's.
It's the fastest growing sports team in the country.
Yeah.
On that report. And also in the high schools that have them, stick with the largest team, which when you look at ours, there's roughly a hundred kids that just stayed in sports. The life, which will make it our largest program that we have on this.
Nice.
All right. No other announcements, still looking for a motion to adjourn the closed session.
I move to adjourn to close session pursuant to Wisconsin state statute nineteen point three eighty-five, one one C, to discuss employee contracts. The school board will not recommit in open.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So moved to second to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin state statute nineteen point eight five one C to discuss employee contracts, the school board will not recommit in that session.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart? Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scaram?
Yes.